Twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, meeting of the Town of Kennybunk Select Board. Call the meeting to order and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and first up is consideration and approval of minutes. Item A is regular meeting of March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the draft minutes are attached, and I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor. Look how easy it is when everyone's here. Items to be signed, I think we don't have that. You got them right there, okay. So we will move right to public hearings, item four. First up is item A, the municipal officers of the Town of Kennybunk will hold a public hearing to act on the following: Applications from Fifty Main Street LLC doing business as Bev's Cafe &amp; Market, new owners formerly Christians, for a vitler license and a liquor license located at forty-one Main Street. And Merton, I believe you've got something.
Yeah, I would invite the owners to come down and-
Yes, please do.
-and speak to, folks are here, and we're just waiting on perhaps a couple small items from the code office, and once those are approved, we'll issue the licenses.
All right, great, thank you, Merton. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name's Nate Norris and-
I'm Annie Callen.
We're newcomers here to Maine and new to Kennybunk.
Can I just ask you to, I'm sorry, I interrupted, but can I just ask you to talk right into the mic so otherwise the folks at home can hear?
Yeah, no worries. Is that better? Okay, great. Anyway, like I was saying, we're new to Kennybunk and new to Maine. We just closed on the sale of the business of a former owner of Christians on Friday, so we've just been in there, starting our work. But we're both spent our careers in hospitality as chefs, mainly in California and the San Francisco Bay Area. We have family here in Maine and all along the East Coast. We're both from the East Coast originally, and are really excited and grateful to be here. It feels like a really good space to do the type of work we like to do. There's a little bit of paperwork that I gave you guys just as an introduction about ourselves, but what we hope to do with the cafe is have a daytime operating business, breakfast, lunch, to be, you know, at counter service sort of model with people, food and drink to take away, coffee, tea. We'll have, we've applied for a beer and wine license and, you know, pending that, the approval of that from the town and the state, then we'll have beer and wine for onsite and offsite consumption. I think that's really the gist of it. We'll make prepared foods, things people might take home and like finish making for dinner, to finish up as well, so we can kind of hit in all of the areas, I think. I think for us, we really focus, our focus is to have a business that feels where, really, really well considered and really excellent in what it's doing, but it's also really available and accessible to people at large, so feeling, feeling great but not fancy.
Fantastic. Well, welcome to the community and thank you so much.
Yes, welcome.
What's your projected window for when you might open?
Probably the beginning of June is what we're shooting for right now. We're doing mainly aesthetic changes in there right now, so paint's going up right now. We're doing some re-tiling in the bathroom and really want it to feel like a completely different space when people come in, so it's like a drop ceiling like this now, we're putting in tin, so-
Oh, nice.
-we're thinking about two months is what it's going to take us to get there. Health inspector's coming tomorrow from the state, and so if we can have that box checked off and, you know, and then focus on, focus on what we know how to do.
It's exciting. Well, thank you. Welcome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item B, this is like maybe the highlight of the night. The municipal officers of the Town of Kennybunk will hold a public hearing to act on the following, to see, yes. I'm sorry, I completely skipped the motion, then we were so excited, we just assumed it was done. Thank you. Yeah, we're just gonna do all the motions at the end. Okay, let's do a motion.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the vitler and liquor licenses for Fifty Main Street LLC doing business as Bev's Cafe &amp; Market contingent upon final approval from code enforcement.
Second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor. All right. Congratulations and welcome. Here we go.
Yay.
All right, now, item B. The municipal officers of the Town of Kennybunk will hold a public hearing to act on the following: To see if the town will vote to accept as a townway Conservation Drive as depicted on a plan titled Subdivision Plan of Brooks Landing Subdivision 129 Brown Street, Kennybunk, Maine for Joe Felzone, dated June eleventh, twenty twenty, and revised through September seventeenth, twenty twenty by Sebago Technics Incorporated, recorded at the York County Register of Deeds in Plan Book four-one-zero, page ten, and approved by the Kennybunk Planning Board on September nineteenth, twenty twenty. The subdivision improvements are complete and the necessary reviews and approvals per the town ordinances are in order. The developer is asking to have this roadway placed on the next town meeting for possible road acceptance, and there is supporting documentation, and we have motions, but for right now, we'll open the public hearing. If anyone wants to make a comment, they're welcome to do so. Yeah, step right up.
Hi, my name is Chris Allen. I live on Conservation Drive, and like the prior folks that were here, I moved here from California. My wife and I were there for twenty-two years. I'm originally from, from Jersey, and I wanted to move back east, and I said Maine is the place for me. So I found the great home there. I think I want to point out one key fact, factor here, because you're looking at the cost to like maintain the road. So for my home, I'm paying almost eight thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes, and there's twenty-three homes there, so if you multiply that by twenty-three, you get, it's over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that, that the town is now collecting because of that new development. So I kindly ask that you move this forward, you know, because we're paying the taxes and we'd like to get those services for which we're receiving them. And then one other point, you know, I saw this sign when I come off the turnpike, it says that Kennybunk is business, or certified business friendly, and I think it'd be, it's really great to promote development in Kennybunk, and if you show that you support the developers and that you support growing Kennybunk, putting in new homes, putting in new roads, I think that, that really goes a long way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak? There you go.
Hello, my name's Mike Freed. I live at Glendale Road in Kennybunk, and I've, I've been there a couple years. Rita owns the house, she's been there ten, eleven years, and my question to the board is, I have nothing against accepting roads, but, the big but is, where is the money coming to maintain the roads when the existing roads in town already have, are in poor repair? I've taken some pictures, I'm not going to show you, but just in my neighborhood, there's, the, the condition of the roads are not good. There's poor drainage, there's broken up roads, there's patches that were put over roads that are broken up that do no good at all. So my only question is, has there been any assessment done of the condition of the current roads that the town already is supposed to maintain, and is there any plan in place to actually maintain those roads? Because they're not maintained right now. So I see accepting roads under the condition that we're going to maintain them, and we're not maintaining them. So basically, we're taking the money, tax money, we're taking the, the money from the citizens to maintain roads. I understand that they want those roads accepted, but if the roads aren't being maintained, do they really want those roads accepted by the town if they're not going to be maintained anyway? But the town's making income and taking income from the developers to accept those roads. Just a question, and I'd just like some answers from the board-
I can-
-how they're going to approach this, okay?
I can give you a couple of those answers right now. I think we have a bigger discussion for many of you, some of your points, but to the specific point about, do we have a plan for roads? We, we do, we do street scan for all of our roads in town, so we can see the condition of the road, and that each road gets assigned a, a value based on the current condition of the road, and that can be from very poor to, you know, brand new. And then there's a plan, in following that, there's an assessment of the highest needs and the, and associated costs, and then we try to, try to move through those roads such that our overall picture of roads in town does not drop below a certain point and try to maintain it while still trying to balance the cost of, if you've made all, brought all the roads up to-
Yeah.
-great quality, what would that look like from a cost, prohibitively expensive? So we're trying to make that balance every year, and there is a plan in place, and each of the roads that I've worked on each year are listed, and as well as the, the plan for future roads.
So do you think when you add more roads to existing roads that aren't even up to code right now, I, if there is a code for road maintenance, I would think there was, how do you plan on, when you expand the, and take on more roads, when you have a plan in place and you can't keep up with what you have because it's prohibitively expensive?
Right.
I'm just curious.
That is the question that we've been debating. I think for this specific road in, in particular, and for the current roads-
Yeah.
-it entered the process, it went through the process with the understanding and agreements in place. I mean, we could stop it, but, but everyone moved forward in good faith.
And I, I'm not against stopping this particular development as much as looking down the road about maintaining it.
And that's exactly, that's exactly right. And this board has taken on that, that exact question of, where's the balance between new development coming in and, and as pointed out, there's tax revenue associated with that that potentially could go towards the bigger picture of fixing all of the roads in town versus the, the burden of repairing and maintaining those roads over time, as well as plowing and all the things that need to happen. So where do we draw the line? Is the line right where it is right now, or do we need to change that? That question and that policy is going to be examined, that's on our list for this year to be working on. That is, and I invite you and anyone else who's interested in the, in this to come to those meetings and be part of that discussion.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, Miriam, and then I'll just circle, no, no, it's either-
Other people want to speak for themselves.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. John Curtis, also on Conservation Drive. I think certainly to the gentleman's point, that current roads need to be maintained, understand that and respect that. Our road is coming in as a brand new road, new construction, new infrastructure, yet we're paying the same tax revenue that, as he said, could go one point five million dollars, one point eight million dollars over the next ten years, brand new infrastructure, that goes to pay for other things. So I think the burden of bringing on a new road really isn't bringing on a new road, it's maintaining all the roads that you have. So to support development, future development and growth of Kennybunk, I think we want to be careful not to keep new residents out or surprise new residents with not having a maintained road when you've already paid your mortgage and you know what your expenses are, and now all of a sudden, the road doesn't get accepted. So if you were to make a decision on that in the future, that needs to go to the beginning of the development, to the realtors that are telling you, oh, it's a formality, and ensure that the people know that when they buy a home there, they're not going to get certain services that other people in the community get. And so I would just leave you with that thought. I know that ours is progressing, but I think that, you know, there is an infrastructure growth that has to be accommodated, but some of that is, that isn't because there's a new road. A lot of times, it's because there are older roads that maybe still need to be maintained, and we need to keep up. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this?
I have someone online-
Okay.
-who'd like to speak. Matt Giger.
I'm not sure if we can get him on the board or not. No. Go ahead.
All right, great, yeah, thanks for, for giving the time. Yeah, what John was saying as well said, my questions are around the lines of the, the overall sustainability of it, similar to what others have brought up. So the, what is the life expectancy of a road is something like fourteen years? So I know it's a new road, but eventually, it's going to need to, to be repaired, redone, and then there's also the plowing and all the other maintenance that goes along with roads. And as, as one of the residents brought up earlier, there's a lot of roads that are in disrepair, like Brown Street, for example, which leads to the road in question here. I went down it the other day, and it's, there's plenty of potholes, it's in dire need of repair. So we have these, these broader roads that serve a broader amount to the community that are, are not dead ends. And so when people talk about their tax dollars going to good use and the tax revenue that, that is coming from these residents, I think it's, it's a good point, but I think they're helping to maintain all the roads that are for the broader community's use, whereas for dead end roads like this that just serve, you know, a few people, I think, I think it'd be interesting to do a mathematical analysis to see, okay, the, the overall cost of maintaining this road, what is that relative to the tax that's, that's received for it? And is it sustainable to continue taking on roads like this?
Great, thank you. I think that's, you know, all excellent points. And, what, yes, yes, sir, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tim Cash, and I live on Conservation Drive. We've lived in this town for sixteen years. We chose this town after retiring. My husband is Department of Defense. We've lived in, overseas, all around the country. We have lived in many, many states, and we chose Kennybunk. And this is where we're putting down our roots. We sold our house on the other end of town. We sold it to a local family, and they're not from far away and using it as a third home or whatever it is. So we're working class people living in our town, and we're asking for recognition of Conservation Drive as a town road because we are town residents and we are citizens of this town, and we deserve the same courtesy and respect and equal treatment. And I shouldn't really have to entertain people saying, well, what about the road fifteen years from now? Please. That's not a fair thing to say. We are, we have done what we promised to do, and we ask you to recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
I'm Anna Curtis. I'm also a resident of Conservation Drive. I just want to say one thing, as you go forward, thinking about how to accept new roads that are built, just keep in mind, I'm assuming that we are, that our homes are assessed for just value, as are the homes on roads that have been accepted. So going forward, it seems to me that if you start not accepting roads, or if you make them remain private, yet those private roads don't receive the benefit of plowing and maintenance, then it seems like the assessment should be different than from homes that are on roads that receive those services from the town. Just, I'm assuming there is no difference, and it seems if you go that right, you may want to start thinking of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other, other thoughts, questions, comments? Miriam.
This whole question came up in my mind after we completed the budget process. We're looking at pretty hefty increase in the mill rate, and I know we all feel a deep responsibility to the people who, and there are many, who may have to struggle to pay higher taxes. So I started thinking, where can we cut back? Where can we try to control increased spending over the years? And the roads came up, and I think it's important to understand, I mean, from what some people have said, I, I think that they don't understand that there are a lot of private roads in this town that are not plowed, are not maintained. They always have been that way. I've lived on one myself for forty-three years. It's not unusual, I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot, Chris, I don't know if you can tell us how many private roads there are in town, but there are a lot of them. So it's not unusual for people to be living, paying their full taxes, and not getting that particular benefit. It, it's been going on forever. So it's not a new thing. I, I just want to put that out there because I, I think that, that may not be well understood. One of the things that Chris told us at our last meeting when we discussed this was that I think there's a difference between the understanding that some of the residents on, on Conservation Drive had referred to. I think the understanding that they've been given that this will become a, a town road may have come from their developer, but Chris has told us that the town does not give the developer any promises. They're told upfront that there are no guarantees that the road will be accepted, and the road has to be built to the same specs no matter what. So when he told us that, it made me feel a, a lot better about changing horses in midstream, if you will, because I, I realize that we aren't suddenly yanking away what, what was promised. If, if a developer's promised something, they shouldn't be promising because they have not been promised. You know, I, I don't want people to feel that we are discouraging development. I think we can encourage development of developments and new houses and still not take on new roads. There's a difference. Just because you, you decide that we can't afford to keep doing this forever and ever, doesn't mean that you don't want people to come and live here. It's just not, that's just not the way it is. So I, I jotted down these thoughts as people spoke, and, and I, for me, it just comes down to that we cannot afford to keep providing more and more and more services and not change anything and expect everyone in town to be able, able to afford higher and higher taxes. Some people can, and some people really struggle with it, and, and that is something that weighs on all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Miriam. Anyone else from the board wish to speak to this? Anyone else from the public? Okay, so the next up then is to decide if we send this to the town meeting. So, so what we're voting on tonight is not acceptance of this road, it is to forward this item to the town meeting, and then the voters in town make that decision. However, we also can then choose to make a recommendation for acceptance to go along with that item on the, on the warrant. So I will first take a motion to forward the item to the annual town meeting.
All right. So I will make a motion to forward this item to the next annual town meeting. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor.
I'm sorry, could I ask that if you could have a roll call vote, please, so we can see this, and I think it's important for the people that maybe at home and may not have a chance to see who's voting. If I miss, if I miss seeing you, I'm not able to record that vote, and I think two of you did not vote in favor of this, is that right?
So, well, we haven't finished it yet, but we can do it, but you won't be able, you wouldn't be able to see it on this, on the recording?
You would be able to hear it.
Okay. We can do that. Then we have a moved, moved and seconded? Courtney?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
Miriam?
No.
Leslie?
No.
And-
Sally.
Sally, go ahead. Sorry, I couldn't remember my own name for a second.
Yes, definitely.
Lisa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that's five to two.
All right, you want the second motion?
And, yes. Yeah, we'll do the second, the second motion as well.
All right. I will make a motion to recommend acceptance of this article. Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Courtney?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
Miriam?
No.
Leslie?
No.
Sally?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that's also five to two. Okay. The municipal officers of the Town of Kennybunk will hold a public hearing to act on the following: To hear public comment on the FY twenty-three, twenty-four Town of Kennybunk municipal budget as recommended by the Select Board and the Budget Board. And the draft warrant articles are attached, and Joel is with us online. I'll turn it over to you, Joel.
I am, thank you. Let's see, going to go through a PowerPoint if that's acceptable for all of you. Past years, we have skipped this, but I think this is a, a good year to, to do a PowerPoint for the public hearing. Any objections?
I don't see any.
All right, I'll, I'll go forward. So flipping from the first page, budget information, meetings rebroadcast on Spectrum Cable, Channel Five, online, on-demand streaming at Town Hall Streams, and then full budget documents are available online as well. And addresses there, this, this budget presentation, this PDF will be posted to our website in the next couple of days. So you can get to these links at that time. Excuse me, Kennybunk's mission statement, the Town of Kennybunk partners with our community members to deliver superior service in the most efficient and effective manner possible while preserving, protecting, and enhancing the quality of life as we plan for the future. Now, outside considerations, things that, that are going on that are outside of our control. One, of course, the main economy, we're still in a, or I should say, you are still in a highly competitive labor market. Here in Florida, we're about the, the same. Good real estate, housing market, and then CPI, this is the, the Boston area, New England CPI, December to December, six point one percent, and then February to February, five point nine percent. So you can see it's, it's decreasing slowly, slowly, and hopefully by summer, it will be back in the low fives, maybe even high fours. I don't think I'd hold my breath, however. Moving on, town utilities, future projects, and again, that's the water district, sewer district, and light and power as well. And then bond interest rates, anticipated to continue to rise in twenty twenty-three to control inflation, bond rate in CAB twenty-four revised. During the beginning of this project, I used five point five percent. That was brought back down to five percent after conversations with our bond advisor, Joe Katar of Moores and Cabot. Excuse me, RSU assessment, and they just, I believe they have their first reading of their budget by their full board tomorrow. I have seen the numbers, and proposed fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is up roughly two point four million for the Town of Kennybunk. We lost roughly one point eight in state funding for a number of reasons, because of our increased valuation, the spread of state dollars over more valuation throughout the state, and then changes in our EPS calculation, or I should say EPS number itself. So mix that all together, and again, we lost about one point eight million in, in state aid from, for Kennybunk specifically. So you'll hear that number discussed by the RSU, but understand that, that each town, the state aid is calculated independently. Rundle for Rundle, Kennybunk for Kennybunk, and the port receives no state aid because their valuation is so high and their student count is so low. Continuing on, York County assessment, proposed fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, that's up sixty thousand, relatively small. That's approximately two cents on the mill rate. And then COVID nineteen still lingers around and continues to be with us. Fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three tax bill, and then on the right-hand side is fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four change. So as you can see, current mill rate of fourteen sixty, breakdown is on the left-hand side, and then typical three hundred and eighty thousand dollar home, typical tax bill, fifty five hundred, forty-eight dollars. And then on the right side, what we're looking at for increases in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, estimated increase for operations, we're looking at approximately a dollar two on the mill rate, debt service, and we discussed that at length on February sixteenth. Debt service, keeping that under control, increase, I should say, keeping it under control by what, deferring the new debt principal payments to future years. So something to keep in mind as you move forward for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, and so on. and so on. Capital breakdown, fiscal year 2324 capital. So we're seeing, we're going to be using general fund balance of $1,082. And you'll notice in my presentation, I've got a line through ARPA dollars. And I'll have that discussion in just a minute. But I've extracted ARPA dollars out of capital as well as out of our operations. So continuing on, new debt of $3.8 million for fire truck, ambulance. SCBA equipment, that's been pushed off. I should have put a line through that. A dollar two COS for me, or if not more, so something to think about, is that CBA, SCBA equipment. Fire chief Justin Cooper shared with Town manager Balzer and myself a letter of support from Senator Collins and Senator King, recommending that the town be given a FEMA grant to cover for this SCBA equipment. So that's good news going forward. It's still FEMA's decision to award that grant. So nevertheless, support at the congressional level is always helpful. Continuing on, you've got the sidewalk, snowblower tractor, skateboard park, Town Hall Electrical, and of course, roads. So I'll go through a breakdown of that in just a minute. And then last but not least, excuse me, sidewalk in front of the Brickstore Museum from Dane Street to Summer Street. Funding for that will come from the TIF, and that also will be through new debt, $175,000 there. Moving on, oop, skipped too fast. Let me make sure I haven't skipped anything else. Okay. So next one, I mentioned the ARPA funds, the second tranche. And I'm just going to go through the bullet points. Back in November, the voters authorized the Select Board to spend that second tranche. They authorized, and the board has done that on a couple occasions, $20,000 for Town Hall remodeling, and I believe $52,000 for a police cruiser, police car. If you recall, for transparency's sake, in the fiscal year 2324 budget approved by both the Select Board and the Budget Board, it included $201,744 for operational expenses and $306,000 for capital items. And those expenses, those costs were going to be offset by these ARPA funds. And we had a brief discussion a couple of weeks ago with respect to the draft on the warrant articles for, that we're going to go to the annual town meeting. Recommended, and we followed the recommendation, to get an opinion from our town attorney, Natalie Burns. And she recommended to exclude those expenses and costs from the annual town meeting budget warrant articles to eliminate any possible voter confusion and conflicting results. So again, I've taken those dollars out of the annual town meeting warrants that you had the link to, and hopefully some of you have opened that up, and you'll see the lines out, the corrections, the fact that that second warrant article, forgive me, the second warrant article has been completely eliminated. So again, makes things easier for the voters, makes things easier because we don't want a possibility of, one, the November vote passed, two, the June vote is defeated. What do we do? So let's get rid of that confusion completely. That's what I've done. And then, so the net impact to the final proposed budget is zero. The ARPA dollars, the revenue has been taken away, as well as the expenses have been taken away. So net effect to the budget. I can go through that in more detail if you wish. Continuing on, here is the overall proposed budget fiscal year 2324. This was a slide that was presented and discussed back when the Budget Board and the Select Board had a joint meeting just recently. I want to say the beginning of March. I want to say it was maybe the fifth or the sixth. And this outlined what transpired between what was presented by interim town manager, as well as myself. So Brian Laverrier and I proposed a net operating budget of $14,485,778, a 16% increase. And what was finally approved was $15,44390, which is a 23.6% increase. And you can see the components. A large portion of that was added, adding 10 full-time positions for $954,612. Other changes that occurred, there were really minor changes in capital. New debt changed. And again, I mentioned the elimination of the SCBA request for 84/7. And we were hearing that our possible new fire engine increased in cost from, I want to say it was $800,000 up to $920,000. So basic inflation. Other, the TIF district, no change on there. So I just wanted to make sure you saw the gross numbers as well as the net numbers in total before I go on. Next slide is the proposed budget fiscal year 23, the changes. And you'll see again, net budget increase, the lineup at the top, far right-hand corner, total combined, $2,953,177, or 23.6% increase. And then, no sense in me trying to read all of these to all of you because it's just redundant. This is going to be posted to the web in the next couple of days. I recommend you take a look and go through these numbers just to get an idea of what makes up that roughly $3 million increase. Moving on, good old LD1 growth cap is still with us. You recall back in November, the legislative body increased our LD1 cap to $13,712,886. And the current budget, including those 10 additional positions for fiscal year 2324, brings us such that the budget is under the LD1 cap by $657,801. Moving on, again, I'm going pretty quickly. Questions at the end. Proposed TIF budget for fiscal year 2324. And you can see all the numbers: recurring expenses, salaries and wages, credit enhancement, which is, this is the last year for our credit enhancement at the Pithian Block. So subtotal operating, $593,772, capital projects and assets of $304,000, and then debt service of $760,000. So bottom line total, $1657,772. And that, if I were to scroll back up so you could see the numbers, you'd see that number is embedded in our total, in our total budget, and also embedded in the warrant article itself. Capital assets and projects, long, long list of items that we're looking at. Left-hand side is use of general fund balance of $1,082. Right-hand side is new debt, bond issue, the $3,810,000. And again, all of the items listed, and you can see the roads and discussion with respect as to other items built into that roads number, specifically the inflation adjustment for Longwood Drive, Longwood Drive sidewalk, Rosewood Circle, and Glenwood Drive, what I call the woods. So you can see, again, underneath that is a list of items. I heard the word, the name of Brown Street, and you'll see that Brown Street is included in this list as well. Moving on, capital funding sources. Again, this is redundant, unassigned general fund balance, various, $1,082, and then the breakdown of the general obligation bond, $3.8 million, and then bond authorization for the sidewalk in front of the Brickstore Museum of $175,000. And then you can see, as of March 28th, the balance outstanding for our bonds, $12,185, and then bonds authorized but not yet issued of $17,305. For total bonds, outstanding and authorized but not yet issued, $29,490,000, a rather significant number. Summary of possible annual town meeting warrant articles. And again, these are the articles that are embedded in that link. And again, I've eliminated that $306,000 warrant article for the ARPA capital that was voted on back on March 16th. I'm sorry, February 16th. What I've done is list out the warrant articles, comprehensive budget article, and there's the breakdown as to what those numbers are in that warrant article. And then, warrant article number two, use of general fund balance. Warrant article number three, bond authorization for the $3.8 million. And then warrant article number four, bond authorization for the sidewalk from Dane Street to Ellen Street, the one in front of the Brickstore Museum. And then last but not least, budget timeline, town meeting referendum date, Tuesday, June 13th. Absentee ballots available Monday, May 15th. Warrant will be posted no later than Thursday, May 25th, and warrants to be signed by the Select Board Tuesday, May 23rd. And then there will be another public hearing required by the charter, seven to 20 days prior to the town meeting. And right now, that's scheduled for the Select Board meeting on May 30, 2023. That's it. That's my short discussion, if you will, of the presentation for the public hearing. Questions, concerns?
Thanks, Joel. Dense and informative, as always. This is very, very thorough. Appreciate it. So since this is a public hearing, we will be taking questions, comments, concerns from the public if you have any. If you'd like to speak, just come on up to the podium. Nobody online? Okay. Any additional comment then from the board? I think we've seen that in excruciating detail. So thank you, Joel. We really appreciate it. And again, thank you so much for all your extensive work on this during the budget process and then the long run-up to the budget process, and for all the many, many, many years that you've been working with us. This is... Nice to see you on there one more time. Maybe you'll probably be back for the 30th, right? Okay. Well, thank you again. Don't see comments from the public at this time, so we will close the public hearing and move to public comments. So this item five, public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make that are on something that is not part of the agenda, please step up to the podium, and this would be the time to do that. I like to wait just long enough to make it uncomfortable. Okay. So no public comments tonight. Then we will move right then to item seven, time-sensitive business and staff presentations. And here we have quite a few because of the generosity of our community. So the following donations we're going to accept. A Kennebunk family that wishes to remain anonymous donated their stimulus check in the amount of $450 to the town's emergency fuel assistance fund. $100 from David Jones of Cape Elizabeth for Kennebunk Fire Rescue in memory of Richard V. Bibber. $500 from Cummings, Lamont, and McNamie of Kennebunk for Kennebunk Fire Rescue in memory of Richard V. Bibber. $25 from Warren Toddie of Arundel for the Kennebunk Dog Park, and $3,475 from Kennebunk Savings for the Park and Recreation Department's concerts in the park. So that's quite a lot.
Beautiful. Well, I will make a motion to accept the donations and send letters thanking everyone for their generosity.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? I didn't think we were going to get any no's on that one, so we're just going to show of hands. Again, thank you for everyone for that. That's always wonderful to see. Item B, confirm the town manager's nomination of the finance director. Kayla Tierney has been hired as the town's new finance director. Kayla joins the Town of Kennebunk with six years of auditing experience, and 3.5 years with the Town of Lisbon as their finance director, tax collector, and treasurer. She earned a bachelor of science degree in business administration accounting with a minor in English from Stone Hill College. And per the town charter, the Select Board confirms the town manager's appointment.
Should we have her introduced?
Oh, yes. Step right up. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here. Today is day two, and everybody has been very welcoming, and I just want to thank everybody for that. And I'm excited for working with you all and for everything that will come.
Great. This is very exciting to have you aboard.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's make this happen.
All right. We'll make it happen. I will make a motion to confirm the town manager's nomination of Kayla Tierney as finance director effective March 27, 2023, for a term expiring on June 30, 2023, which is the date that all annual appointments expire.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? All right. Please join us in welcoming Kayla to the Town of Kennebunk.
Welcome.
Okay. And we have more confirmations here. Confirm the town manager's nominations for annual appointments for various positions. And here we find the nominations for annual appointments through June 30th, 2023. And all of these require our confirmation. So these are one-year appointments for the remainder of the term. Acting town manager, formerly Joel Downs, the appointment is Brian Laverrier. And finance director, tax collector, treasurer, formerly Joel Downs, Kayla Tierney. Deputy tax collector, in addition to current appointees, Chris Fogg, Jenny Casey, April Jones, Merton Brown, Katrina Boyer, and Tabitha Barden, we're appointing Amber Crone. And general assistance administrator, in addition to current appointees, Karen Witten, Tabitha Barden, Chris Fogg, that would be our town manager, Heather Balzer. So these are all one-year appointments, filling the remainder of one-year appointments, ending on June 30th. Do you have anything to add to this, or do you think we just go ahead? All right. Let's just go ahead.
All right. I will make a motion to confirm the additional town manager's nominations noted above for the remainder of the one-year terms expiring on June 30, 2023.
Second it.
All right. Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Okay. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for being willing to fill those positions. I realize in the last couple, I have not asked for public comment or input on these. I will endeavor to remember to do that. Hopefully people can help remind me if I don't. Or if you have something, you're sitting out there, and you have something you want to say in one of these, just jump up and come to the podium, and you'll have a chance. Okay. Confirmation of the town manager's three-year appointment of the health officer. Deputy chief Gleason recently completed the required state health training, state health officer training. Brian Powell will continue to serve as assistant health officer. His three-year appointment was made last year and expires in 2025. And so this is a three-year appointment through March 15th, health officer, formerly John Brady, and the appointment is Bo Gleason.
Make a motion to confirm the town manager's nomination of Bo Gleason as health officer through March 15th, 2026.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. Any comment from the public? There we go. All right. All those in favor? Here we go. All right. Welcome, Bo. Thank you. Okay. Item E, discuss boards, committees, and commissions. And our task here is to appoint a charter commission member. The charter commission, which was approved at the November 8th, 2022 town meeting, has six member positions that were elected at the town meeting, and three members that were appointed by the Select Board on December 6th, 2022. On February 28th, 2023, the Select Board accepted the resignation of one of the appointed members. And since then, advertising, seeking a new member have been placed on our website, on social media, and in the local paper. We received one letter of interest from the following resident, who has been invited to this meeting to discuss their interest in serving on the charter commission, and that is Derwood Parkinson. So could, Derwood, if you're here, there you go. I figured you were here. Please come up. And welcome.
Very much. Let me just start talking?
Just start talking. Tell us why you're here, and what your interest, and what you want to contribute.
So I'm a longtime resident of Kennebunk. I'm a local attorney. One of my practice focuses has always been municipal and land use law, represent a number of towns statewide. I've been an active volunteer in Kennebunk. Have advised the Select Board generally about how charters work. And it's something I'm familiar with. I was recently the counsel for the Town of Lyman for their charter revision. And charter work has been a part of my legal sort of portfolio for years. So this position came up, and I said, what the heck? I've never served on a board before. So I've advised a lot of boards, but never actually served. So I'd be pleased to get in and roll up my sleeves and hopefully... So I'd be pleased to get in and roll up my sleeves and hopefully make a good contribution.
Fantastic. And from my perspective, I mean, I've known you've contributed a great deal over the years, the time that I've been on the board and I'm sure before, to our community and the workings of the board and this board and many others. So, I was very happy to see your name on this paper right here. And I think I'm hopefully the...
Thank you.
I'm sure the charter commission would feel the same way, that they're getting a very valuable asset here. So, this is... We really appreciate you stepping up and being willing to do this. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
No, totally agree with you.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to say the same thing when someone asked me if I had any recommendations who we should appoint. Your name came to mind, but I didn't want to impose on you. So I was glad that you stepped up yourself, so I'm excited that you've put your name in. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, very glad to see you on this.
Do you want to take any?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. See, this is... Any questions or comments from the public?
Sorry, Karen.
Can I say anything, Karen? No? Okay. All right, go ahead.
I will make a motion to appoint Derwood Parkinson as a charter commission-appointed member.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Great. Thank you again for stepping forward. All right. And now to accept a committee resignation. This is Jack Jensen of the Kennebunk River Committee, regular member, 2023. I don't know if Jack's here tonight. Okay, I guess not. Okay. So then we'll just take a motion.
Is there... Does Heather have any... Do we know anything, or no?
About the... I'm sorry, about the...
About Jack Jensen's resignation from the Kennebunk River Committee?
Yeah, was it just in general, or...
Yeah, I think there were some health issues and just been on for a while.
Okay.
And so we have started advertising for that along with... You can see it down below, with a number of the other vacancies.
Perfect. Yeah, no, just some previous stuff before you got here. We have always tried now to kind of check in and make sure that if the person resigns and we don't have a written reason or they're not here to tell us that if you know something and we're not addressing it, we just want to make sure. So I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Jack Jensen from the Kennebunk River Committee and send a letter thanking him for his service.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Okay, that's 7-0. Okay. And the town is looking for two regular members, 23 and 24, and one alternate member, 23, to represent Kennebunk on the Kennebunk River Committee. The committee was formed within inter-local agreement with the town of Kennebunk Port, and this agreement grants the committee sufficient authority to act as planning, management, and appeals board in order to assist the management of the shared resource. And for more information, you can visit our website, kennebunkmain.us/kennebunkrivercommittee. And so next is the announcements of vacancies on town committees. And the town is looking for residents to fill vacancies on the following committees. Are you ready? Because there's a lot. The Budget Board. First quarter meetings, then multiple meetings throughout the year as needed. The Climate Action Plan Task Force, first and third Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. Recently expanded membership by three members. Composting Committee. New committee meeting schedule not yet set. Economic Development Committee, first Thursday at 4:30 p.m. Energy Efficiency and Sustainability, third Thursday at 6:30 p.m. Fair Hearing Authority meets as needed. Kennebunk River Committee, third Tuesday at 7:00 p.m. Lower Village Committee, first Monday at 9:00 a.m. The Planning Board, second and fourth Monday at 7:00 p.m. Site Plan Review Board, third Thursday at 7:00 p.m. The West Kennebunk Village Committee, second Thursday at 6:00 p.m. And the Zoning Board of Appeals, third Monday at 6:30 p.m. as needed. And to learn more about each committee or to obtain a committee volunteer application, please visit our website at kennebunkmain.us/committees. So, if you're out there and you're interested in contributing to the community, you're looking for something where you can share your experience and your knowledge, maybe learn something, and meaningfully contribute to the town, there are a lot of opportunities and a lot of different angles that you could do that. So please, don't hesitate to step forward. We are looking for more volunteers. And along those lines, we'll move to update committee reappointment process. And we're looking to streamline the reappointment process for those with terms expiring on June 30, 2023. Details in the process are provided with the supporting documentation. But do we want to speak to anything related to that?
We just wanted to outline the process for you, the terms that are expiring. So we'll ask folks if they want to be reappointed. If not, then we'll... If there is anyone that we aren't currently advertising, we'll add those to the advertisement list, and then we'll seek to do interview with those folks. And then we'll also provide you information. It's about the end of May because they're reappointed. At the end of June, have a conversation with folks if we want to interview folks as well as we advertise for those people that are interested in the vacancies. So just wanted to outline the process for you. Also, typically, it's the town manager in these interviews, a staff liaison, and then sometimes it's the select board liaison also for the committee. Or if you just want to appoint one among yourself to work with the town manager and the staff liaison on all of those vacancies. And then we'll provide you information about attendance and other things for those who are seeking reappointment and then as well as filling vacancies. So, just wanted to be really clear on the process. This is for reappointments. So, not necessarily as we, as people, you know... Although, we'll probably come back to you at some point to talk about, do we just do this on a monthly basis so that there's some kind of schedule as folks leave committees? So, we're going to start with reappointments because those are coming up. So we'll come back to you around May and talk to you about what that looks like and who wants to seek reappointment and some new folks who are interested in committees.
That's great. Great. Thank you for thinking that through and for working the staff to do that. Item A, old business, second reading. And this is to discuss nominating an elected official and a public representative to represent Kennebunk on the York County Budget Committee. District Two, which includes Arundel, Bedford, Kennebunk, and Kennebunk Port, which has two vacancies to fill. One for an elected official expiring March 30, 2025, and one for a public representative expiring March 30, 2026. So if we have a select board member or a member from the public willing to serve, each would still need to be elected at the caucus taking place on April 12. Only elected municipal officials can vote to seat budget committee members. Fellow elected board members that wish to vote would also need to attend the caucus. The York County Budget Committee Caucus will be held on Wednesday, April 12, at 6:30 p.m. in the York County Courthouse, 45 Kennebunk Road in Alfred. So, we'll open that up. I think we've had some discussion about this once before. Does anyone want to volunteer?
Yes, Shiloh, I'm willing to put my name in. I'm excited to put my name in. I've had a couple conversations with some people, and so if you guys want to approve that, that'd be great. I'm excited to dive deeper into York County politics.
Perfect. That's what I was hoping you'd say.
I saw you looking at me.
That was very subtle.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's start with that, then. Let's make that motion.
All right. I'll make a motion to nominate Lisa Pratt to serve on the York County Budget Committee as the elected municipal official until March 30, 2025, if elected at the April 12 caucus.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Am I allowed to vote?
You are allowed to vote. There we go. All right. Congratulations. Thank you very much, Lisa.
Yes, thank you, everyone. I'm excited.
All right. So, do we have anyone... No one's stepped forward as a public representative? Now's your chance. No? Okay. Right, look. Go hang out with Lisa. This would be great. Okay. Well, we don't have someone from the public for a public representative, but we do have an elected municipal official.
If I pass the caucus.
If you pass the caucus. Well, we're rooting for you. We should all show up en masse. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay. Well, then we will move to new business. Item A is to hear a brief presentation regarding the Kennebunk Land Trust. And Sandy Gilbert, executive director of the Kennebunk Land Trust, here to... Would like to meet with board members and the town manager and provide an update on the trust's work in connection with the town of Kennebunk. So Sandy, if you're here, come on up. And your mic is already on, so you're good to go.
Hi, everyone. Derwood's a little taller than me. Well, good evening. Thank you for giving me some time here. I'm really just excited to introduce myself. So I had my one-year anniversary as the executive director three days ago. So it's been a really busy year, really fun year, and with Heather coming on board and really wanting to get more involved with the town and more connections, I thought this would be a nice time. So I'm going to start a little bit and just talk about what the Kennebunk Land Trust does. Some of you might be really familiar, some might not know as much. So we are a small nonprofit here in Kennebunk. We have nine board members. And the mission of the Kennebunk Land Trust is to permanently conserve and steward land to benefit human and natural communities. So we are a trust in that we hold land and we keep it undeveloped and maintained. We have a nine-person board, 29 properties that we own, 12 that have trails on them, and we have 14 easements. We conserve over 3,000 acres in Kennebunk, and that includes the Kennebunk Plains. We don't own the plains anymore, but we were the original owners of the plains and then turned them over to the state. So what a land trust does is we raise money from various sources to purchase land. We can also receive donations of land to hold in trust. Two of the ways that the trust conserves land is by write-out ownership. So we can have land that's donated or that we purchase. We also own or purchase or get donated easements. An easement on a land is when the owner retains that ownership, but the land trust owns the development rights. So essentially, the land can't be developed in that way, but the owner can still do, you know, many other uses of the land. They can still live on the land. And there's even things that can be written into easements, like you can log on your land, you can hunt on your land, you could do different energy production on your land. So every easement is going to be different, and that's going to be between the landowner and the trust. So there's lots of different ways that we can conserve land, and we are open to lots of different ways to do that in Kennebunk. As you know, and we've talked about a little bit tonight, that development is happening, and there's lots of creative ways that the trust can be involved in that. So one of the reasons I'm here tonight is to talk about that, to introduce myself, and hopefully, as we go forward, be able to be a really good partner with the town. We have some ways that we already partner with the town. You might be familiar with Wonderbrook Park. That is a park that Kennebunk Land Trust owns half of the land, or maybe not exactly half, but... And then the town owns another parcel of it, and together, that makes up the park. What's great about that is that it really is a partnership in maintenance. The town has been really generous in plowing the parking lot, dealing... We had a really big tree that was down in the parking lot earlier. The town went and cleared that very quickly. So the town maintains that part of Wonderbrook, and then we maintain all the trails. So, you know, we're out there a lot. We have monitoring requirements that we do as a land trust, and then we're clearing trails, we're making sure that they're safe, we're regrading trails, we're building bridges, things like that. So anytime there's been an issue at Wonderbrook, the town's been a great partner. The Bridle Path is another example. So as you know, the town owns the Bridle Path, but we have three properties along the Bridle Path. So we're really invested in helping the town as much as possible keep the Bridle Path nice and clear and open and safe. So when there's been a tree down or we get reports of something that's across the trail, we'll call up Public Works, and I've talked with Kim plenty of times and said, hey, you know, should that something that our folks go out and deal with, or is that something you guys want to deal with? So we try to be a really good partner there. I've chatted with different town staff on different things multiple times, and I've met a few select board members and a planning board member. So it's just really great to just get the word out about what we can do and also just being a community partner. We hold events, we have community gatherings, we do educational events. We're actually in part of the May Day. As part of the May Day festivities with the town, we're holding a nature walk that folks can come to. So it's not even just land conservation, it's also just about being a good community partner when it comes to events and things like that. And that's something that I'm really interested in, is creating those collaborative relationships. So whatever ways that we could be a partner, whether in land things or just in general as a good community member, those are things that I'm really interested in doing, too. And so really going forward, you know, we have good relationships with developers in town, with real estate agents, and so it's just about, you know, if there are things that, within the planning board or within the select board, if there's a role that we could play when it comes to, you know, sharing information or, you know, thinking about what we could do creatively when it comes to development and conservation, that's a conversation that we really want to be a part of. So I have some materials that I have for the board, but I also have for public if people want, about... A little more about details of how we actually conserve land, because I want to make sure that people understand, you know, that easements are voluntary, land donations are all voluntary, you know, they're not as restrictive as some people might think they are. So it's really about landowners' wishes, and they can be really flexible. We have easements that have farms on them, we have easements that are protected forever, you can't do anything with, and then there's easements that you can log and hunt and do all kinds of stuff. So in that part, it's really flexible. So I have some materials about that and just some materials about the trust. I also have lots of trail maps. I never leave home without them. And I don't know if there's any questions or if that's part of this or desired, but would love to, you know, have any questions or any comments. But thank you all for your time, and really great to meet you, Heather, and welcome to Kennebunk.
Great. Thank you. Any comments or questions from people?
I just wanted to say thank you. We met last year at the fundraiser, and so you've been on my list to contact and get in touch with, but thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Sally. She made it happen. Am I allowed to approach the bench?
Sure.
Please do.
Please do, yep. Oh, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Sandy.
Thank you so much, Sally. Good to see you. Yeah, good to see you. And can I leave some of the maps in the back, maybe, for folks to take?
Please.
Awesome. Well, have a great rest of your meeting. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks, Sandy. Appreciate it. Okay. Switching gears a little bit. Item B is discuss a sole source request for the purchase of a fire department command vehicle and related equipment. In this year's FY '22, '23 budget, the fire department has $65,000 budgeted for the replacement of the current command vehicle, which is a 2009 GMC Yukon per the fleet's schedule. Kennebunk Fire Rescue, KFR, would like to purchase a 2023 Ford F-150 police responder. This vehicle is currently available at MHQ of Marlborough, Mass. to be outfitted as a command vehicle for $65,000. MHQ provides a one-stop shop for vehicle sales, upfitting, and services of public safety, public works, and special purpose vehicles. They currently have this vehicle in stock and can start the upfitting process immediately if the purchase is approved. And currently, four dealerships in Maine cannot get fleet vehicles. A similar vehicle may not be available until 2024, and it would then need several vendors to outfit it. MHQ provides a one-stop shop for vehicle sales, upfitting, and services of public safety, public works, and special purpose vehicles. They currently have this vehicle in stock and can start the upfitting process immediately if the purchase is approved, and currently, four dealerships in Maine cannot get fleet vehicles. A similar, similar vehicle may not be available until 2024, and it would then need several vendors to upfit it. If we purchase the vehicle from MHQ now, the complete vehicle package, including upfitting, can be purchased from one vendor at the best pricing. Our current 2009 command vehicle was scheduled to be replaced this year, however, with the anticipated addition of the operations chief position in July, KFR would like to retain this vehicle for one more year for use by operations chief, and there will likely be a request in the next budget to purchase a new vehicle for the operations chief. So this would expand the fleet rather than replace, at least in the coming year. Right?
So this would, this would replace, and then likely, because we have a new position, assuming it gets approved in the budget, you would likely see a request for a new vehicle next year. So, but, but this also includes keeping the current vehicle for one more year.
Right, for one more year.
Yep.
I have a question for the chief. What is, thank you for being here, good evening. What is the current use of the Tesla command vehicle?
Yeah, good question. So the Tesla vehicles being shared by a lot of the staff to do a lot of the training that's a little bit further away. So, for example, a lot of the, some of the safer firefighters are in paramedic school in the Lewiston Auburn area, so they're utilizing that for traveling distances that are greater than, than what we would use for general use. As far as a regular command staff use, it's been a little bit challenging for us with the size of that vehicle and what we would currently carry in it. So, for example, the vehicle that I'm currently using, which is this 2009, you know, I have all the response gear for firefighting, including SEBA, the tactical gear for the SRT team, and for active shooter response, hazmat team response, et cetera. So I physically can't even fit my turnout gear in the Tesla at all, let alone any of the SEBA or other gear.
Well, the previous chief was not as big as you.
No, he was not.
He would be the first one to tell you that. That was his, that was his push for that vehicle, was he's like, I'm very compact, I can fit in this. But it is, so I guess the, the reason that I brought it up was because in thinking about for the future, moving forward, they were not looking, I mean, he said at the time, this is something he'd like to try, we think we can have enough use of this vehicle to make it worthwhile. But we are looking, when we tried, you know, we're trying to think about ways that we can be less carbon intensive in our, throughout all of our operations and processes in the town. So, well, clearly, that vehicle is not the right move for the long term, or more of those for that particular use. Would you say that it's currently being utilized effectively? Or do you think there's, it's, if we, if we're moving forward with additional vehicles for the department, do you see a path for that type of vehicle?
I think that there could be, you know, probably a discussion for a different day. There, there probably could be some better uses for the vehicle within the town government. I was excited looking at the potential for the Ford F-150 Platinum electric vehicle, however, in actual practicality, it's, it doesn't work out well for emergency services as well. So cohorts in Westbrook, the fire investigator had one, and cold weather operations are not kind to its range, so they had a fire at their power plant, and they could not, it ran out of energy, and it took two hours for it to take energy when leaving the scene, and then they had to charge it up again here at the Kennybunk Plaza to make it home. So it added an extra four hours to, to his evening, just, so I think there's a lot of really good uses within town, or, you know, personal use, but I find it is still a little bit challenging for us in emergency services, you know, 24 hours a day, regardless of environmental conditions. So even in the, the storm that we had, the winter storm with all the coastal flooding, there was a lot of talk of ensuring that vehicle never got down to the coast. You know, with the hurricanes in Florida, there were 80 or 100 EVs that, you know, had some partial saltwater intrusion and caught fire as a result, so we were really avoiding getting it down there. And obviously, that's something that, that I can't have. I can't be operating a vehicle that I have to pick and choose what emergencies I can respond to.
Fair enough. That's, that's what I was, exactly what I was wondering about. So, okay. Thank you. Other questions? Comments, questions from the public? Okay.
I will make a motion to waive the select board's purchasing policy to allow for the sole sourcing of one 2023 Ford F-150 police responder upfitted from MHQ of Marlborough, Mass. Is, is it supposed to say police?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, just checking.
Yeah, it's confusing. That's the vehicle, but it's for the fire department.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor? Okay. Thank you. And take a motion to authorize the, from the ARPA funds?
Yep. I will make a motion to authorize the town manager to spend up to $65,000 using first-round ARPA funds approved at the June 14, 2022 annual town meeting for fiscal year 2223.
Second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Okay. So next up, staying with the fire department, approve a $50,000 expense for the purchase of a 2,000 Pierce Tower ladder fire truck from the town of Wells. We like buying ladder trucks. Staff is currently awaiting the delivery of a new fire ladder truck within the next 18 to 24 months, so potentially up to two years before we get that. Our current 1988 ladder truck will need maintenance of $30,000 just to remain operational during this time, and has no resale value. The town of Wells has offered to sell their 2,000 Pierce Tower ladder truck for $50,000. Our Scarborough Public Works emergency vehicle technician has worked on this truck for the town of Wells for years and is very familiar with it. When our new ladder truck arrives, we can retain the 2,000 Pierce ladder truck as a spare, or sell it and recover most, if not all, of the money we purchased it for. There are no funds specifically identified in FY 2223, however, the select board has the authority to use a reserve within the TIFs, which is currently allocated at $75,000. This vehicle is an integral part of the town's public safety infrastructure with respect to the CMP transmission line that runs through Kennebunk. The West Kennebunk Utility Corridor TIFs are generated by the CMP transmission property, and therefore, the purchase of the ladder truck through the West Kennebunk TIF is permitted and recommended by staff. Questions for, yes, go ahead, Bill?
Yeah, just curious, had you had replay, had you done the repairs on the 88, which is a really old truck? Assuming you could have done that, those funds would have come from a repair budget, presumably?
I would have had to ask you guys for, for funds above and beyond for that repair, so.
All right, so it's not like you're going to pull that from a repair fund, and then we can pull $20,000 from the, from, from the TIF and do it that way, so that's not available to us?
Right.
I see.
But it does look like that when we sell, if we decide to sell this in a couple of years, if we made some of that, at least some of that money back, it would be at least, presumably, at least the difference between the $30,000 and the $50,000. And we could just choose to put that back in the TIF, I guess, I guess, reserve, or another reserve fund.
So it says here that there's no resale value, so what is the market to sell it? We're selling the...
Good question. So, so, so two things. So the, the 2,000 Pierce from Wells is currently for sale on Brinley Mountain, which is a private sale for used fire trucks. It's currently listed for $95,000, but the Wells Town Manager and Wells Fire Chief are aware of our situation, so they, we were looking to collaborate to do a mutually beneficial deal to help us out. Our, our ladder truck, I would like to donate to the Sanford-Vogue Fire Program, so I think it would be a really good use for that ladder. You know, they certainly don't need it in emergency operations like we would, but would benefit from it for a few years where they could train recruits on general operation. But certainly, if you guys wanted me to try and sell it for whatever we could possibly get for it, I'm more than happy to do it.
I see what you're saying, okay. And then we would sell the 2,000 once we get the new vehicle?
Absolutely. And I'm, I'm very confident that we can make a decent amount of money turn around in two years.
Is that a tower, or is that a...
It is. It is a tower ladder. It does have a pump and a water tank on it as well, so it has a lot more capability than our current ladder truck does, and it would allow us two years of opportunity to train prior to the, the brand-new truck showing up. So I'd much rather have our crew get used to that type of operation on a used truck rather than when the brand-new one comes in. So I think it'll, it'll help with that transitional process over the next two years.
Yeah, this seems like a win all the way around. I appreciate the collaboration to make this happen. This is better than limping for two years with what we have. Yeah, Miriam.
It's, it's kind of a peripheral question, but can you just remind us, there were, there was some conversation between us and Kennybunk Port about sharing trucks. What, what, where did that go?
Yeah, so, so ultimately, it ended up, the ISO ratings require that our ladder truck be in the area where 80% of the three-story and above buildings are, which is right here, same thing for there and their downtown. So sharing one would not have worked for either town, we would have lost ratings on both sides. There, there is an advantage to sharing a spare, so if you guys decided down the road you wanted to retain the spare and then rent it out to different communities if they needed it, that, that certainly is an option. So we did not go that route, however, we ended up saving hundreds of thousands of dollars by doing a, a joint purchase with them. So they bought an identical ladder at the same time, so we got numerous different savings as a result based on that.
Thank you.
Is, is that, this more, is Joel still on?
Looks like he's not here.
There we go.
Yeah, I am.
Hey, hey, Joel, I don't know if you can hear me.
I can hear you.
I wanted to hear the status of that fund.
The, the reserve?
Yep.
Well, the reserve is $75,000. We have that intact for fiscal year 2223, current year. However, there is some talk of, of using $24,000 of that for, oh, boy, I'm trying to remember the Cambridge Project, and if Chris Osterreiter's there?
Yep, it's for the Workforce Transportation Grant, so it's the city's contribution to that, so that is the $24,000. They were recently awarded that, so then there's $51,000 left.
How convenient.
Thank you, Joel. And Heather.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Okay.
All right. Well, this is exciting. I will make a motion to authorize the town manager to spend $50,000 from the West Kennebunk Utility Corridor TIF using the Select Board Economic Development Reserve for the purchase of the 2,000 Pierce Tower ladder truck from the town of Wells.
Second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Reposed? Okay. No, no opposed? Okay, good. Seven zero. There we go. Thank you. Confusing there for a second. Yeah, all right. The chief walking away, we must be off fire. Oh, no, we still have fire stuff going on. Okay, here we go. Item D, more fire stuff. Update the signature page of the memorandum of understanding for mutual fire aid between Kennebunk and Bedford. On May 12, 2011, the town of Kennebunk signed a memorandum, a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, with the city of Bedford for fire mutual aid. The MOU was signed by former Kennebunk Town Manager Barry Tibbetts and former Bedford City Manager John Bouvier. Both municipalities are requesting the signature page be updated to reflect the names of current managers, no other changes are being made. So I think this one's fairly straightforward.
I think so. Is there, is there, should I, okay. All right. I will make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the memorandum of understanding between the town of Kennebunk and city of Bedford for mutual fire aid.
Second it.
Moved and seconded, yes.
One quick question, I'm really sorry, chief. Well, I know, but I just want to make sure, I want to make sure that from everybody's standpoint, how are you, I mean, do you, do you think there needs to be changed? As far as I can see, this is just a repeat of the same procedure.
Yeah, exactly. And we actually have countywide and statewide mutual aid agreements anyway, so it's, it's more of a formality and a redundancy than anything, but I am personally meeting with Chief Gagne and Chief Everett tomorrow to just discuss in general the mutual aid between Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port, and Bedford.
Okay, so you don't see any need for any changes to be made? Because that was one of my concerns when I read it. Okay, thanks.
Just in case. All right, moved and seconded. Any additional comments? Last chance. Okay. All those in favor? All right, seven zero. Thank you, chief. I think you're, I think you're good now, unless you want to talk about LD 2003. Okay, so item E is to review proposed LD 2003 zoning amendments. The planning board held two workshops in January and February, and a public hearing on March 13th to discuss proposed changes to the zoning ordinance relative to recently enacted Affordable Housing Legislation, LD 2003. Their March 13th public hearing was continued to March 27th. In the event that the planning board completes their public hearing on March 27th...
They did.
They did. I'm like, which date is it now? They completed their March, their public hearing on March 27th. The select board should advance the zoning amendment recommendations of the planning board to a public hearing on April 11, 2023. Bill, do you have something you'd add? So this may appear on the, on the June 13, 2023 town meeting warrant. All right, so if, so they advance, advance their zoning recommendations, we have a motion, but let's have a discussion first. Bill?
Quick, quick thing, and I'm going to just get Chris Osterreiter to jump in on one thing. Did they change that definition on short-term rentals for the amount of time? I know at one time, they were saying 14, then they went, there was a discussion about 30. I wasn't quite sure how that landed.
Good evening, Chris Osterreiter, answer your question. The planning board didn't feel comfortable changing that definition yet, like they left it at 15 days or less, and I think what they're really trying to do is be as conservative as possible, and let the board go through their machinations, and then let that sort itself out. This zoning amendment, what we do know is next year, as this takes hold, we're likely to be back in June of '24, doing this again one year from now, making further amendments. So they kind of took the first tack to be compliant with some subtle differences in terms of not just where this becomes applicable, but mainly with accessory dwelling units is principally where you're seeing the major changes with the law. So I jumped off your question a little bit.
That, that's okay. The, the other question was about square footage. I think she had that one.
Sorry, yeah, I just see that the current ordinance permits 650, and it just says the board discussed increasing it, but I didn't see what ended up actually going.
Sure. So one of the things that the board this time did, and I think was actually really good, is they held the public hearing over two meetings. Rather than hold it once, they went through it, discussed it, we looked at what some other communities did, and even last night, they were on the precipice of maybe making a change and decided not to. Currently, under our definition, we refer to accessory apartments. The revised definition would be what is accessory dwelling units. They will be now allowed anywhere that single-family homes are allowed throughout town, which is basically everywhere, and our limitation right now is 650 square feet, and it is generally attached. Under this new definition, they may be detached, you may have up to one, and what the planning board did is they said you may have a maximum of 1,000 square feet, or 40% of the livable space of the dwelling unit. So I do think that's something they will actually dig back into a little bit more as we get into it, and we actually look at the entirety of the homes we have. The thing that's really important to understand with accessory dwelling units is while you have to meet setbacks in conformity on the lot, it doesn't go toward a density issue. Sometimes you have some lots in these smaller units in town where it might not work because of lot coverage. So it, the idea, if you just did a room above the garage, becomes a little bit different. You now may have a detached, separate thing that can be a little bit different. So there is, I think they really have a grasp of why they want to do it. They were ahead of their time in terms of allowing these many years ago. What they really know is there's even more to dig into it, and as we look at the housing analysis in the community, we'll probably just look at in downtown urbanized areas, how that fits, and then some of the more rural areas, do they actually allow more multiple ones and do that more, so, yep. You're welcome. And I didn't mean to turn tonight into the big discussion, that's really what the 11th is about, so I want to kind of generate some interest, and then on the 11th, I'll boil you to death.
So just the teaser tonight, okay.
Okay.
Other comments, questions, before we move this to a public hearing? Okay. So we'll take a motion to move it to a public hearing now.
Okay. I will make a motion to move the zoning amendments as recommended by the planning board to a public hearing on April 11, 2023.
Second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Okay. So moved?
That's Chris.
Voted, all right. Okay, I'm just making sure whether I need to go over that, because it's done at this point. So, yes, so the, if you've not seen it, then go ahead. The members of the select board are invited to observe the meeting on the 27th that was recorded, and we encourage select board members to view this meeting on the topic before the public hearing on April 11. Item F, discuss a letter of support for the Kennebunk Sewer District Charter Amendment. The Kennebunk Sewer District has been working with representatives from the Maine Rural Water Association and local state legislators to develop legislation that will allow for the modification of the Kennebunk Sewer District territorial service boundaries. While Kennebunk Sewer District is leading this effort, they are seeking a letter of support from the town of Kennebunk that speaks to the need of this change, the general compliance with informed growth policies, comprehensive plans, and the anticipated benefits to the community, as in environmental, more development flexibility, and staff has been working with representatives from the Kennebunk Sewer District and recommends that this change, change be pursued. Do you have anything to add, or Chris, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I'll try to keep this very simple. That was the teaser right there.
We'll be the judge of that.
So the strategy is introduce LD 2003, and then this really follows very nicely. One of the things I really think about, there's three components to LD 2003, and the one that is easiest to get the arm, or all of them kind of have one common thread. In trying to reduce some of the barriers to housing affordability, they're looking at increases to density. State law guides you to certain densities, but on non-sewer areas, you're limited. On sewer areas, you have a lot more opportunity for density. If you look at where a lot of the growth has been in the community, it's been west of the Turnpike. That area is very limited in terms of sewer area. You basically have the area in around Kennebunk Savings, and then the two schools in Dorothy Stevens. A lot of the development that's been happening out there is unsuwer, just on private sewer. LD 2003 has a very interesting distinction in that what it's trying to do, and one of the barriers it's trying to eliminate, is allow additional development on a lot before you split it. The ability to have that increased density in a lot, not that a lot can be smaller, but even have more of it, involves whether you have access to sewer. If you have a lot that is sewered and vacant, you could get up to four units, but if it's unsuwer, it can only be two. So that doesn't mean the lot becomes smaller, but somebody may have the land, and they may not go through all the infrastructure costs to develop that. So there's a lot of things that have to happen, but what we do know, and if you go back and think, earlier in the meeting, we talked about Conservation Drive, and you go back and when the planning board approved that in September of 2020, and we're talking about talking about the road getting accepted potentially this June, all of that work that was in the construction of it is about a two-year window that goes through that. I think what we're knowing is if the town adopts these amendments to LD 2003, which we should, the likelihood of continued growth in that growth area is going to be benefited best by sewer. That doesn't mean it's going to happen. Sewer isn't there, so the developer's going to bear that cost to get it out there, but this makes sense. The thing that has to happen is this does change, the charter has to happen at the state legislator, so they have to go through their process, which is a different schedule. So, basically, if we miss it now, you can kind of be waving goodbye to the vote for like a year or two. And something I'll say that is actually, I think this is very forward-thinking. You may have heard about this, and it's not a bad thing, so I want to kind of preface that. There was a development that occurred over Ruffel Warren's Way, and that is on private sewer. What is very interesting is there is a sewer line that goes through there that serves the element, uh, the middle school. It's owned by the RSU. There is no capacity to go in and look at putting those units on public sewer, even if they were to buy it, take it over, do anything, because it's not in the sewer district's area. So, there's no avenue for a conversation, whether the developer wanted to take on all that cost and give it to the sewer district or buy it from the RSU, it doesn't really matter. There was just, there couldn't be the conversation. And that's a little bit unfortunate, because when you look at something, the ability to just do the little bit extra and protect your natural resources, that is the benefit of being on public sewer. We are very fortunate to have nice groundwater supplies, a lot of the areas served by public sewer, but the proximity to our streams and our resources benefits this way. So, all that being said, we're here to support the sewer district in this cause. They don't just do this, they, they work with the town. We went through the Conference of Planning. We talked with them. We looked at the growth areas. So, this is really reacting to something that is being put forward and saying, okay, should this come down the line, people are ready to react to it and build upon it. So, that's, that was short, wasn't it?
It was good.
Great.
Good for us.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. Is, yeah, if there's a representative from the sewer district here, then welcome, step right up. Love to hear from you.
Good evening. I'm Chris Galant.
You're just, sorry, you're just going to turn the mic on. There it is. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Chris Galant. I'm the district manager for the sewer district. Appreciate you guys taking this topic on. I've been working with Chris on this. I think it's, should be stated that the sewer district has no interest in extending our sewer out into West K or beyond. We're just opening it up for development. So, without any district boundaries out there, we can't accept anything. So, it's just as simple. It cleans up our boundaries. It lines up well with the comprehensive plan, so it's a process to get it there, and we're just looking for some support. That's what our Board of Trustees is looking for, so open to questions if you have any.
Questions from the board? I think this is, this is an advancement. I know we've, we've been talking about this, been a number of opportunities, as I think alluded to over the years, that weren't available, so I think this is, this is a step in the right direction for, for the town, so just my, my two cents. But any questions or comments from the public? All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.
That was, you got out easy.
Yeah, we grilled the chief.
Yeah. You didn't take notes from him. I will make a motion to authorize the Town Manager to send a letter of support on the board's behalf, supporting the Kenny Bunk Sewer District Charter Change.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Great, seven, zero. Okay. And that brings us to discuss any other business of the board. Is there anything that we have that hasn't been discussed tonight? Needs to be? Okay. Then I will move to subcommittee reports. Have any subcommittee reports from last time? I don't think we do. And then I'll just start, I guess, down there with Board Liaison Reports.
Do you want the individual comments too, or after?
Uh, we'll do individual comments after.
Okay, I don't have a liaison report, I don't think.
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand if you have a board liaison report to give.
Very brief.
All right, go ahead.
Very, very brief. Of course, some of you know from the, uh, the emails that LPC met again on the 23rd, and I did send everybody out copies of that. There's some very interesting things that have occurred. I'm hoping you get a chance to weigh through them. I did send a list of like eight or nine that I really wanted everybody to kind of, kind of queue in on, because some of them do, do kind of alter some things that, you know, that, some of them are concerning. In either case, uh, so I highlighted those, and then the rest of them are, there are some other important ones in there as well. So, please take a moment to go through those, and if you have individual questions, shoot me an email. If I don't have that answer, I can get it. So, just let me know. There is that, and then last night, of course, we had, we already know, the Planning Board finished their, finished their work on LD 2003, and we voted to move it forward tonight, so.
The Site Plan Review Board met on March 16th, and there was supposed to be a, or a special meeting on April 6th was scheduled, but, and it's still scheduled with the, it was scheduled in, for the Bernard Tavern or Barnard Inn. They did rescind their application. They withdrew their application, but there is still an April 6th meeting for issues regarding 135 Port Road. So, that is that. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. Sally, or Lisa, do you have anything?
Thanks. The Climate Action Plan Task Force met, and I have to report that we are moving along finally. We met with our public engagement person, Carol Morris, and Karina, Katrina, Karina was there from Southern Maine Planning and Development. And so, we're trying to get some ideas for a public engagement, if it might be public meetings, or it might be surveys and things like that, but we're starting to move along with the Climate Action Plan, which is exciting, and we're still seeking three more members, if anyone wants to apply. But yeah, I'm really excited now that things are sort of moving and we're getting some work done.
Awesome. Thanks, Lisa. Merton, you have something to add?
Yeah, I do. I, I have a, a report lia, as the liaison to the Charter Commission. Last couple of meetings, they've been working on the bylaws. It looks like those are finally done, and they will be voted on at their meeting on next Wednesday. They've also completed with, they met with me and with Heather and two members of the commission, and they have drafted a proposed recall ordinance revision, uh, recall portion of the Charter Commission revision, and that has been passed out now to the full committee, and that will be a full discussion on that next, uh, Wednesday's meeting. So, that's what's happening with the Charter Commission.
Thank you. Thanks, Merton.
Thanks, Merton. Appreciate that. The only thing I had to add was the Conservation Commission continues to move forward with their outreach, public outreach on pollinator-friendly yards, pesticide use, herbicide use. They had a public event, and there's materials associated with that for, for distribution, and they've been, been moving with that. And then the next, one of the next initiatives they've got going on is looking at connectivity between public lands in town or publicly accessible conserved lands in town. So, that's something they're, they're interested in looking at, and I think we're talking about that at the next meeting. So, with that, I will move to individual Select Board member comments, and then just, I guess I'll, I'll start with Courtney, and then just hit your mic as you go around, if we, if you're interested in giving a comment.
So, I think everyone remembers Armin Boudreau talked about the roundabout and the trucks, and he had reached out asking for an update. He couldn't be here tonight, was wondering if we'd heard anything on that.
I'm going to let Chris respond. We just had a conversation about this.
Yeah. Do you know who was assigned?
And I was like, a sign. A follow-up call, actually.
Cool, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a great question, actually. Turns out, I reached out to our local contact at the Turnpike, who lives in town, so they're quite familiar with this issue. They have suggested they've been struggling with this issue for the better part of 20 years. Ironically, when you go through both the Service Plaza, there are some very prominent signs they have in place, but long story short, they're cognizant of this. They're willing to do additional measures, whether it's signage or pavement markings. I think as we move into that spring season, it's more time to do that. They're willing to do that. So, they're very responsive to our outreach with it. It's not a simple fix. I think what they've certainly seen, I think staff has noticed it as well, it's in the last two or three years is when it's really upticked. And it isn't anything, some of it may be with the completion of the Service Plaza rooting, but that's always been very odd and unique. So, I think what it is, it's something we have to continue to work through. I think it's always going to be a problem. Inherently, the people who've gone through or newer to the industry